Good evening. I would like to bring in the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. May we have a roll call, please? Ms. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Willis?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here.
Mr. Pope.
Mr. Evans, can we have the invocation and pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer, bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District, and grant to this board and their deliverations this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Let's lead to the Lord, in the United States of America, and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up, we have our student representatives, Grace Receiver and Andrew Poops.
Good evening, everyone. We have a bit of a longer board report this evening, just as a warning. Apologies, we're not gonna get into it. Okay, so at the kindergarten, we had our first school-wide treasure gems assembly where we celebrated a student in each classroom who has done a tremendous job of being respectful, responsible, and safe. All three hundred students were in the gym, and it can be overwhelming during full school assemblies, but the children cheered for each gem and followed the expectations throughout. The kindergarten students have been working hard on their end-of-the-trimester assessments this past week. Our pre-K students are in the groove and working hard during their academic time and also playing hard, which we love to see.
At Glen Olden School, we held our Fall Book Fair from October tenth to the thirteenth. On October fifteenth, Glen Olden's family school held a fall festival. A good time was had by all. October eighteenth, five of our fifth-grade students were chosen, along with Ms. Cronin, to go on a field trip to the Philadelphia Airport with Superintendent Riley to attend the school tour program. The students learned about the daily operations of the airport. October nineteenth was our dress-to-impress year day. We had quite a few good-looking students and teachers in our building. October twenty-third started our red ribbon week. This is a week where students are taught to live a drug-free life. Students wore red on Monday. Tuesday, they came dressed in their favorite sports jersey. Wednesday was a neon day. Thursday was mismatch day, and Friday was sunglasses day to shade out drugs. Friday was also our picture day, and the students all looked very nice. October thirty-first, our students celebrated fall with different activities and special snacks. We can't wait to see what is in store for November here at Glen Olden School.
At Norwood, on October seventeenth, Tracy Pickner held a painting canvas fundraiser for a district employee for breast cancer awareness. On October eighteenth, we recognized unity day with the staff, and the students wore orange to show their respect against bullying. On Wednesday, October eighteenth, a few of our fifth-grade students and Mr. O'Faul, along with Superintendent Riley, went to Philadelphia Airport to attend the school tour program. The mission of Philadelphia Airport is to educate youth about the PHL ecosystem and provide a meaningful experience. The students learned about the daily operations of the airport and what it has to offer to the passengers going through and the tenants that work in the airport. Our Life Skills classes, grades one through eight, over the past few weeks, have been providing special treats to students during lunches. The students learned valuable lessons pertaining to money and food preparation. On October twenty-third, Dr. Esposito, Mr. Pavlovich, and eighteen students went over to the Norwood Police Department, where a ceremony was held honoring police officers who have died in the line of duty. The week of October twenty-third to October twenty-seventh was red ribbon week. This week was, this week, we encourage the students to live drug-free lives. Our students wore red on Monday, a hat on Tuesday to put a cap on drugs. Wednesday, they wore green for supporting being clean. Thursday, we wore sports team shirts, and Friday, we wore sunglasses to shade out drugs. The students all had the opportunity to sign a banner in support of living a drug-free lifestyle. On October twentieth, our Life Skills students participated in a Bucks Builder event over at South Avenue Field. They participated in many different activities. On October twenty-seventh, our middle-school students had their annual Fall Fit Festival. Mrs. Vaughn had a lot of fun activities for the students. Also, on October twenty-seventh, our home school hosted an indoor trumpetry in our gym. There was a great turnout, and all the families had a good time. On October twenty-ninth, our theater students sponsored a haunted hallway, and it was well-attended. The students all had a great time. On October thirtieth, our Life Skills students, grade one through eight, went to Lynnville Orchards for a fun field afternoon. And on October thirty-first, Halloween, we held our annual Halloween parade around the outside of the school. All the students and staff had a great time. We also had our PBIS middle-school Halloween dance on October thirty-first. The students had a spooky time dancing away in the gym.
October was an eventful month for Prospect Park School. We started off the month with Red October, Philly Dress-Down Days. We also held our annual breast cancer awareness dress-down day in response to go to Night for Heart Organization to show unity for one of our district employees currently battling breast cancer. Our students signed our No Place for Hate pledge and learned about kindness and integrity this month. We held our annual Halloween parade, which had a huge turnout. Our middle-school students had a great time at the school Halloween dance. Our student council held a mobile bike project that students had an opportunity to sign up for. Students really enjoyed this. We are looking forward to a great month of Norwood, of November, here at Prospect Park School.
Tinnicum School started the month off by holding a Philly Spirit Day to celebrate the NLCS championship team, the Philadelphia Phillies. Fortunately, that's not still the same. But the students painted T-Town bread as they showed their school spirit by wearing everything and anything Philly-related. On October fifth, our middle-school students took part in our annual Fall Fitness Day. Students participated in various team sports, such as baseball and volleyball, and they finished the day with the ever-popular Mile Run. It was a fun day despite the warm weather. Student Council held elections for the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four school year officers. Students running for office created posters and persuasive essays, which they read in front of their classmates, outlining the reasons why they qualified to hold a position on the student council board. Congratulations to our newly-elected officers. President Kylie Ryan, co-vice presidents Ryan Waikrush and Kylie Sloan, Secretary Marco Durst. Bucky the Buccaneer visited classrooms to award our PBIS October students of the month. Congratulations to those students recognized by their teachers for displaying the core qualities of respect, responsibility, honesty, and pride. Tinnicum Home and School held a school-wide Halloween pumpkin decorating contest. Students, teachers, and home-rented parents worked diligently to create a fantastic display of pumpkins ranging from the Philly Fanatic to Moana, and included a scary red-eyed spider, a turkey, a popcorn container, Kona ice, and even a plastic wrapped caramel apple. All students voted, and the winner of the pumpkin decorating contest was Mrs. Schneider's fifth-grade Harry Potter pumpkin. Honorable mention went to Mrs. Kreis' second-grade Zero the Ghost Dog pumpkin, and Ms. Berkheimer's elementary learning support mass-students' ice cream cone pumpkin. On October thirty-first, we closed the month out with our Halloween parade and elementary classroom parties. Students paraded outside and around the playground for parents to enjoy. Student Council sponsored a costume contest, and prizes were awarded in the following categories. Best costume, Fay Scanlon, Mr. Fanning. Best moves, Jimmy Haynes, who was the big dog. Loudest applause was Ryan Waikrush, a sumo wrestler. The scariest costume was the Kylie Sloan, who fought the clown, and the funniest costume was Jacob Acetti, the dinosaur.
At the high school, on October twenty-fifth, the athletics department held three winter sport festivals for all the winter athletics. Good luck to wrestlers, basketball teams, swimming, and diving teams at indoor track. Have a great season and stay healthy. Picture retakes were on November first. All students should be wearing their IDs at the high school now. Thank you, Mark Sale, for sending us the free lanyards for the IDs. On November second, Ms. Lorio's forensic classes and the lifestyle classes worked with Officer Denton and Chief Madonna from the Prospect Park Police Department to work through a mock crime scene in the Life Skills apartment downstairs. Using clues and observation, they worked to determine if the scene was suicide or homicide. Mrs. Vaughn helps integrated science classes tied into her current content to Halloween by analyzing candy for carbohydrates. They had to read the nutrition labels, determine carbohydrates, calculate calories from carbohydrates, then identify which candy was which, finally identifying an exercise activity that would run off the same amount of calories and reflecting on those findings. Nicole Werner and Renee Barrett were lucky enough to be supported by IHS to attend the National Association of Biology Teachers Conference on November second to fourth in Baltimore, Maryland. This was a national conference that focuses on biology teachers at all levels. They were able to try out new biotechnology equipment, hands-on teaching models, and experience labs that are aligned with the new next-generation science standards. Mr. Freeland and Marcy Ben have been busy providing entertainment for the Tinnicum Diabetes Walk and the Media Day, Media Veterans Day Parade. In addition, the band is getting ready for the Ocean City, New Jersey Christmas Parade on December first. November sixth was the annual powder puff game at the South Avenue Sports Complex. This year, the juniors have the bragging right on their big win. Student Council would like to sincerely thank all staff members who helped with and played in the powder puff game. Congrats to Bill McLaughlin, MVP of the staff.
That concludes our board reports.
Thank you. Next up, we do not have any recognition this month. Okay. Mr. Harris, what would you like us to recognize, Mr. Harris? All right. Next up, Mr. Harris, or Mr. Evans, do we have any public comments?
Yes, from Mr. Pat Quinn.
Good evening, all. School board and president, just stopped by to thank president and the school board and the leadership and your staff for allowing us two weeks ago to put banners up around the police stations, and Interboro School District sent their eighth-grade students out to all four campuses. I can tell you all that the police were impressed, say, to receive students from all four schools, and two of our commanders from our BFW, one who played taps, and the other one who actually displayed the banners, talked about the discipline, the absolute good citizenship these students showed. Four eighth-grade classes, it was really impressive. They all behaved. Jim Howell played taps, and he was just amazed how the students who, at eighth grade, could be a little fidgety, stood there and had attention. And like I said, it was just a tremendous, tremendous ceremony. We're finishing up the banner program for all four communities, thank goodness, and that was like one of the tail end, making that process great. So, president, I thank you and your staff, the principals, the teachers that came out, and, you know, I was saying to somebody the other day, we were talking about school boards, and as you all know, throughout the country, we hear stories of school boards and school districts all getting beat up, and Interboro manages to stay above that because of these types of endeavors. So, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
We were very happy you participated, and thank you for including us in that.
Yeah, thank you for all your, you know, support for the district and the community as well. So, we couldn't do without you either. So, thank you. All right, motion number five, Mr. Evans.
Motion five point one, that the following minutes of the regular meeting in Interboro Board of School Directors held on October eighteen, twenty twenty-three be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries at zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans. Or, no, I'm sorry. Mr. Poop, you have a solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and members of the board, members of the public. This past month, our office worked on the special education matters, a number of contracts that are on this agenda prior to coming to it, as well as construction-related matters and finance-related. That would conclude my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion seven point one, that the treasures report for the month ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries at zero. Next motion.
Motion seven point two, that the fund disbursement in the amount of six million, five hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and ten cents be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries at zero. All right, next up, our committee reports. First up, I will go with the Finance Committee. We met on Monday, November sixth, twenty twenty-three. The Finance Committee had a couple of items on the agenda, but they were mostly just informational. First up was the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five-based index that was presented to us. This base index is given to us by the state. That base index for Interboro School District is five point three percent. That basically says, you know, if we do not go out for exemption, that the highest we could raise taxes is five point three percent. You know, just for members of the board and the public, we stay very far away from that index, but like I said, that is, that's based on fair market value and mileage rates that the state provides for us. Next up on the agenda was just the general budget timeline that Marty provides for us. It basically has dates that we, as the Finance Committee, as well as the board, need to vote on certain items, as well as Marty needs to make sure that he submits things to the state. We also discussed the independent audit timeline. The auditors have been out at the district collecting information. We will be reviewing the draft financial audit before the work session on December twelfth, I believe. So, if any members of the public want to come, they can hear us discuss the audit for last year's budget. We also discussed the parking lot tax compliance reviews that are being, that are ongoing down in Tinnicum, and then lastly, the preliminary financial statements were made available for the staff. Work session is at eleven. I apologize. All right, and that is it for the Finance Committee. Next up, Mr. Goldsboro, the GBO Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Yes, following the Finance Committee meeting on November sixth, we had a GBO meeting in which there was a presentation that was given by Wolfington about electric school buses. It was something that I had asked that we at least get some additional information. There was some information that was shared. I shared some additional information in there, and we're still going to have some ongoing discussions about the possibilities of that, you know, in the future. So, that's as far as we got. That's it. All right. Mr. Rolls, legislative update?
Yeah, the Legislative Council met on November eighth at seven forty-five. Right now, the both PA House and Senate were in session. This week, they ended today. There are many votes in Harrisburg relating to PA schools, so some of them are. PA Senate Committee advances the bill to let parents review explicit materials in school. State Senate, State Education Committee on October ninth voted to advance a bill that its sponsor, Senator Ryan Ahmed, Republican of Lancaster, says would let parents have a say in whether their children can have access to sexually explicit content. Senator Lindsey Williams, Democrat of Allegheny County, called the bill banned the vote. This is moved forward. We aren't sure where it's going to land on, but it is moving forward. There's a bill putting on, about putting armed security officers in every school in Pennsylvania. It's gaining support. Pennsylvania lawmakers are considering acquiring every public school building to have a trained armed security officer present during school hours. The Senate Education Committee on a party-line vote on Tuesday sent the legislation to the full Senate for consideration that would impose this mandate starting twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. Having an armed security police officer, school resources officer, or a school security guard present in extracurricular activities would be up to the school's discretion. Senate Bill eighty-four, protecting the first amendment rights to freedom of religious expression, repeals a section of the State School Code from nineteen forty-nine that penalized teachers for wearing jewelry or clothing bearing religious emblems or a symbol while on the job. Such religious displays held the school board liable if they failed to enforce the mandate. The bill passed the Senate last January unanimously. The law would take effect in sixty days. Signed in the Senate November first in twenty twenty-three, signed in the House October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and presented to the governor on November first. Senate Bill two-two-four, presidential primary date change means the election code and the dates of the election primaries, special elections, further providing for general primary candidates to be nominated and party officers to be selected. The move, this moves the presidential primary date in twenty-four from April twenty-third to April sixteenth to avoid conflicts with Passover. School districts would continue to use a fourth Tuesday in April to determine deadlines in sections three-eleven and three-three-three of the Taxpayer Relief Act, effective in sixty days. Third consideration and final passage, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, forty-five to two. Third consideration and final passage in the House, October eighth, twenty-three, one hundred and forty-four to ninety-nine. In the Senate, it was referred to the rules and executive nominations on October third, twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Senate Bill three-five-three, displaying preamble of the Constitution of Pennsylvania in schools, similarly Senate Bill nine-three-four. The display of the preamble of the Constitution of Pennsylvania Act requires the governing board of each school to display, or each school entity, to display the preamble of the Constitution of Pennsylvania at the entrance of each school building. Provides the display shall take the form of, but not limited to, mounting a plaque. Further provides the display may include artwork at the results of the school contests, may be prominently displayed in each school building for nine, effective in ninety days. Third consideration, final passage in the Senate, October twenty-fourth, forty-two to eight. In the House, it was referred to the Education Committee on October twenty-fifth. And lastly, armed school security legisla-- I think I just read that one. It's the same one. It's a different bill, but the same one, this is the House. The next Legislative Committee will be December fourteenth at seven forty-five. That's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
There, one of the, one of the items that Mr. Willis just read was signed into law on November fourth, and that was the religious garden. That was the word that was utilized, religious garden in an ornament across the head smart. Teachers are now permitted to do that. That law that was signed in, there's one other law that impacted school districts, and that had to do with military families who are now able to enroll their children in school, you know, if they're able to show that that is where they intend to live upon their discharge within a certain period of days.
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Mr. Willis. That, the bill that for the mandating an armed officer, did they talk about funding for that?
They did not.
Okay.
That makes me sorry. That was, that was the thing. And that was exactly what we said in the meeting. They made absolutely no comment on where this was going to be funded.
Okay.
Not be the first unfunded mandate.
Yes.
Yeah, right?
You've been asked to require to pass.
Thank you, Ms. Rolls. Next up, Mr. Goldsboro, Delaware County Community College.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chabon. Yes, so, October twenty-fifth, Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, there was a dinner out at Delaware County Community College. All the, all of the school board members and superintendents were invited to that, and, and Mr. Harris and myself were there, representing Interboro. We got a chance to hear about some of the new construction that was going on over at the Prendergast Building. We got to hear about a number of the, a number of the new offerings that they're offering at Delaware County Community College, along with not just college classes, but also a number of, of different skilled, skilled worker types of training in which they can earn certificates for a lower cost, at Delaware County Community College. Also, one of the things that they said, if you remember, Mr. Harris, if you're there, they said, "We can't leave unless we promise to tell everybody about the new program, for free, a two-year teacher education program for high school juniors that's being offered at Delaware County Community College." So, students that are juniors in high school do have the opportunity of taking classes for free to start to be trained as a teacher, and they can graduate with, I think it's around thirty-eight credits after their junior and senior years. So, they're, they're really looking to, because, you know, one of the things they're leveraging, not only in our school district, but the school districts countrywide are investing in shortage of teachers, and so this is a way of being able to, for kids to be able to access that. And so, I have a flyer here that was printed out. Thank you. I meant to bring one earlier. I'll be sending this out to also all the school board members and also sending it to Ms. Caldwell, so that we can have that. And one of the other things, too, was at that meeting, also, that there was a discussion in our liaison meeting after the dinner. Mr. Harris got a chance to leave it. That we had that, we talked about a number of schools, we're talking about, you know, the possibility of having Delaware County Community College come out to the school and actually present not only to the students, but to the parents and to everybody, you know, what are some of the offerings that they are offering, what are the costs, so that everybody can get in, like, you know, if it's out to the schools, it gets out to the counselors, but having, having them be the ones that are presenting it could be something that, that, you know, we're, I'm sure Interboro will be interested in doing that and all the other school districts, too.
So, Mr. Goldsboro, yesterday, Dr. Cronin, the new president of the community college, came here and visited with Dr. Ekman, Mr. Litton, myself. She was very interested to hear our thoughts on how we could promote the programs that are at the community college, and that was the conversation that we had, is the need for the community college to really get into the schools and get to our students earlier as they, you know, plan these college pathways and how we can support them. So, I appreciated her coming. We've never had that opportunity, and I found it to be, be very informative, and I believe we will see some change in the community college on getting them into the buildings and talking to parents.
That's great.
Yep.
That's great. So, that's everything. That concludes my report. All right. Mr. Harris, Delaware County Intermedi-- you--
I'll sit back. Delaware County Intermedi-- you just met on November first, twenty twenty-three. Approve a contract with Penn Crest School District to manage security services. Approve an agreement with the St. R School for IT Staffing and Computer Services. Approve a contract with Southeast Delco School District for the DCIU to conduct a search for the next superintendent of the school. The fun stuff now, permission for up to fifteen culinary students and two staff members to attend the Family Career and Community Leaders of America State Leadership Conference in Lancaster, PA. Permission for a hundred students and ten staff members to attend that Future Health Professional Pennsylvania State Leadership Conference in Lancaster as well. The next Delaware County Intermidi-- meeting will be Wednesday, December sixth, at six forty-five.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, Capital Improvement Committee?
Yes, sir. The CIT did meet on November sixth, twenty twenty-three, but I had attended a previous construction meeting on ten twenty-six with some of the general contractors and folks immediately involved in construction activities throughout the district, and we received a, an update on the administration building work. As everybody's aware, we'll be essentially moving the administrative offices from here over to the newly-renovated building next door at Glen Olden, starting in December. I understand from the superintendent that a lot of purging and packing is already going on, and I'm sure it'll be moving in there shortly after Thanksgiving, right?
We have our fingers crossed. That's happening. We'll keep everybody updated on when it's official.
And the, the parking lot act at Glen Olden School, paving and striking was completed last weekend, and all the construction, all the concrete repairs have been completed throughout the district. And we got a high school update as well. Essentially, all the subgrade work is complete on the rear of the building for the new cafeteria addition. They're waiting on steel to be delivered. Once the steel is delivered, they expect it will take about a week to two weeks to erect the building skeleton, and they're still doing some of the subgrade work on the front side of the building. We also, both in our Capital Improvement Committee and our Contractors Meeting, we discussed the proposal for the admin, the building reset here to expand the three K and the kindergarten academy. to expand the three K and the kindergarten academy. And landed on at least an interior proposal for that. And, um, we're still discussing the facade work here and at the other school buildings, uh, trying to land on a, uh, a facade that would essentially be identifiable throughout the district as an Interboro school. Trying to essentially, uh, beef up the entrances, um, make it more welcoming and, uh, whatnot, and have them kind of match the, the four, um, uh, community schools. And, uh, other than that, I think that's it. We'll be voting on a, I don't know if we're voting in for the duly retained amendment as well as the proposal for ACBA, HBA for the, um, admin retrofit, and that's it.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Evans, next motion, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Change your, your excuse.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night. All right, Mr. Evans?
Whereas the bond matters are presented by the Interboro Board of School Directors, therefore be it. From the Office of Personnel, motion to the bond personnel action to be approved at ten times one to ten point eleven on page five.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
From the Office of Current Government and Instruction, motion to the bond items to be approved, eleven point one to eleven eleven on page six.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion.
From the Office of Special Education and People's Services, motion to the bond items to be approved, twelve point one to twelve point four on page seven.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Facilities, motion to the bond items to be approved, thirteen point one to thirteen point four.
Second. Motion has, have been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members?
Uh, this is the item you were talking about, thirteen point four here. Uh, I don't know if you have any hearing, if you have any hard time.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion to the bond items to be approved, fourteen point one, the board of school directors approved the purchase of two new side entry wheelchair vans in a cost of seventy-six thousand dollars each, and one rear entry wheelchair van at a cost of sixty-eight thousand from Wolfington Body Company. Total cost of the new wheelchair vans, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars plus tags and registration costs.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? There's one quick comment, um, you know, I know Mrs. Riley, as well as the Transportation Department, have been working hard trying to, you know, alleviate the concerns with transportation that were, um, happening earlier in the school year. So, in that respect, you know, the board looked at some of the concerns that there, that were brought to our attention, and that is why, you know, we're moving to try to purchase more vans to help, um, alleviate some of those runs that are, you know, from here to some of those charter schools or private schools. Um, it just gives us a little bit more flexibility. Um, I do also appreciate all the directors who jump in and drive a van when need be, so. Uh, yeah, I know Kelly sometimes shares, you know, we always are in need of drivers, so please, if you need, um, you know, you want to drive a bus or a van, please, uh, log into our, uh, employer, employment portal.
And you don't need to see the driver's license.
Right, Ms. Lambert, weren't you driving the van the other day?
We have pictures to.
All right, any other questions or comments for that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion fourteen point two, the board of school directors approved Martin High School Lauren Reed, Taver Taylor, Michelle Horst, Lynn Galloway, and Vernonette Riley to attend the twenty twenty-four ASBO Annual Conference in, in Hershey, PA, March fifth to the eighth, twenty twenty-four, at the Boston ITC. Six thousand sixty-five dollars to be paid for district funds.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion fifteen, the board of school directors approved a revision of the bond policy in the category of operations. Eight-one-zero dot two, transportation, video and audio recording.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Turn the old business for the board. New business? Ms. Riley?
Yes, thank you all. Uh, Ri-, a reminder that all students in grades three K are off next week due to conferences. Uh, they are taking place on Monday, November twentieth and Tuesday, November twenty-first. The high school also has conferences on Tuesday, November twenty-first from six, eight P M. If you do not have a conference scheduled, there is still time to do so. Uh, please contact your child's school office or the teacher directly. Uh, I mentioned this last month, but Interboro High School Theater Department proudly presents Game of Tiarez, which opens at the end of the month. Uh, there are three scheduled dates, eleven twenty-nine, seven P M, eleven thirty, seven P M, and twelve-two has a afternoon, has an afternoon matinee, matinee at two-thirty and seven. Uh, tickets can be purchased online or at the door. Uh, you can visit the Interboro Theater website at interborotheter.com for more information. Uh, and let's see, we have the Interboro Ridley Thanksgiving Game coming up at the South Evans Complex on Thanksgiving Day. Uh, gates open to nine A M. Tickets are on sale and can be purchased at the high school or at the gate. Shirts are on sale. I hear they're going quickly. Uh, you can also purchase them at the high school. It is a collector's item right here. Uh, and on behalf of the board and administration, I would like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. I can't even believe we're here. That was good. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Board members, any comments?
Uh, just real quick, congratulations to everybody who ran, uh, and got elected. So, congratulations there.
That's another, another four years for all of us. All right, um, if there's nothing else, if there's nothing else, please visit Interboro School District website at www.inoverSD dot four for further information on the meetings listed below. On Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three, a board reorganization will be held at the administration building at seven P M. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held virtually on Monday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M. The next regularly monthly meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held at the administration building on Wednesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.